Okay, good evening. It is 6:20 PM on Tuesday. I don't even know what day today is. It's June 20th, 2023. I apologize, I'm a little out of sorts. We're starting a little bit late. And tonight is the budget hearing for the Board of Aldermen down the hall in the North Auditorium. And we can only have one feed going out from this building at a time. So we have a hard stop at 7:00. Really, they'd like us a few minutes before 7:00 so they can do the computer stuff. So I apologize in advance. It looks like we're going to have to get done what we can get done and then delay the rest of it until next month. Okay, so let me just make notes. I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:20. No, this is not my paper. This is the other paper. Sorry. Okay, Ms. Raymond's here. Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Lampier?
Oh, here.
Thank you. That does make a quorum. We also have Ms. Johnson and we have Mr. Poska. Thank you for being here. And I think Mr. Claffey might be returning. So I'm just going to dive right in. So the first item on our agenda -- oh, let me just do two things. We have two updates on our agenda and then our work for this evening. So taking them out of order, the policy work. If you recall, our last meeting, we talked about policy committees about policies because each committee is kind of looking at their own policies. And just an update on that is that there's a number of policies. Nashville does things very different as far as our policies about policies than every other district in the state. So we're still working on getting all that together. I was planning on bringing it in July, but maybe given tonight's time crunch, it might be August. So expect, I think we have five or six policies on policy that Nashville has kind of squished into one policy. But I'm going to present to the Board, maybe teasing them out into all of the policies the way that the rest of the state does it. Okay, so the next thing is you guys all got a memo in your packet with an update on the Middle School Steering Committee work. And thank you, Mr. Claffey, for coming back at 6:25. So we definitely have a quorum now. So I'll let Mr. Poska speak to that a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Again, I know we're up against the clock. I don't want to rush through this. I want to make sure we give it its due diligence. But earlier this year, Ms. Raymond, as we tried to outline the work, asked us to look at the middle-level policy. We had shared that we were going to look through it via the lens of the Middle School Steering Committee. And that committee has been hot at work since December on a variety of things. So what I felt that was necessary to do was to update the policy committee about the progress that has been made, knowing that we are not bringing forward anything to act upon tonight, but just to share out the work that we've made. And that's consistent with not only what we talked about with this committee, but also what we shared out with our staff in the NTU about what our possible next steps are going to be. So in the memo, we've outlined the members who were on the committee. You know, we had approximately 24 members or so. And we've been meeting regularly since December to begin this work. Due to the amount of turnover, administration, et cetera, and with the inability to meet last year, December was an opportunity to kind of for the committee to get together, the committee to get together, reconnect, set our norms, and try to establish some goals for the work that we will be embarking upon throughout the remainder of the year. Originally, our goal was to make a recommendation, have that committee make a recommendation of the superintendent and to the Board of Ed regarding middle-school leveling. I'm here to tell you at this time, we are not ready to move forward through that on that recommendation, not because of the lack of effort, but I think, you know, the reality of the situation is, to use, you know, an athletic analogy, the time ran out for us this year, and it's something we'll continue on next year. We spent the month of January reviewing a variety of articles surrounding the topic along with a review of previous work in a middle-level book that the committee had delved into prior to that. So we wanted to be respectful for the work that had previously occurred by other members of the committee prior to this administration coming onboard. That led to some conversations in February regarding what we've read in trying to kind of come to a consensus on what our beliefs were in middle-school beliefs and best practices. Certainly, I think that led to some good conversations. But I think, you know, overall, as we got into the discussions, we saw that there was a bit of a disconnect between what is best practice and what is occurring on a regular basis as it pertains to middle school. In March, we continued with this conversation, and we tried to calibrate it through the lens of some writing that we connected with and that was related to students who were part of the Nashville School District and trying to identify what that writing was in connection to what level they had previously been assigned in. I think it was a great activity for all of us to be part of, and it led to kind of some conversations about levels, you know, talking about the differences between levels, how students are assigned to the levels, talking about the expectations of the students within the levels, and then finally talking about whether or not that the Nashville School District leveling of philosophy and practice fit with what our middle-school beliefs and best practices were. This set the stage for kind of another discussion in April regarding this that led to a vote by that committee regarding how they felt about leveling. There was an overwhelming consensus by members of the committee to move forward without leveling at the middle-school level. We then delved into some work, excuse me, in May to continue that. But what was evident from that discussion is that we weren't ready to move on. We still needed to have some discussions about what those next steps were. We were talking about trying to create a one-page to have a discussion with our staffs and with our community about what that entails, and then also developing a survey about what that's all about. But the reality is that the time ran out. We were not able to pursue that. What was very -- one of the tremendous positives that came out of this work is the level of the dialogue that occurred on a regular basis with members of this group, even though people didn't always agree with one another throughout the course of the work. I think there was, at times, agreements to disagree and agreements to kind of listen to varying perspectives as we got to that end. We know we are not done with this conversation. We know we have more work to do. But I think it was important, and when I shared this with Ms. Raymond and Dr. Andre, to provide an update not only to the policy committee, but to the Board of Ed regarding our next steps and where we're at. Again, we were given a task. We've taken that task, and maybe the members of the committee have taken it quite seriously. But we're not quite ready to come forward with a recommendation regarding where we stand. So that's kind of an overview of the update of the work that has occurred, you know, since December of 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Poska. So the Steering Committee won't meet over the summer, correct? So --
They will not. The goal is to continue to pick up this work in September and again, October, November, maybe to bring forward some of the recommendations from that committee. So we're still working on kind of the agenda and the timelines as we get back to school. We had a final update meeting with the committee beginning of June, whenever that was and that meeting was, to talk about those next steps. So everyone in the committee is aware of where we're going and the work that still is left for us to do.
Okay. So we should expect sometime in the fall that the committee will take a look at the actual policy and start talking about language and recommendations for this committee regarding the vision for middle-school education and then also what specific policy changes they might recommend.
That is correct. And at this time, the building principal has been advised to schedule their buildings that they have scheduled them this year. So there are no new changes for this upcoming year.
Okay. Questions, comments from the committee? No? All right. Having seen the SAS data just now, I think it's important to be having this conversation on a district level because our SAS data was sobering.
Uh huh.
All right. Everyone's quiet. All right, so on to our agenda. So we have a number of -- we had a relatively ambitious agenda for this evening, which I don't think we're going to get through in the 27 minutes that are left to us. So my request of the committee is that we take things out of order. Mr. Poska and I talked about things that were more time-sensitive versus less time-sensitive for the district. And I think JLCF, the wellness policy, is something that we've been working on for months and months. I know that there are students planning to come to our full board meeting next week if it moves past this committee to speak on it. I know Warren has been working on this with the Student Senate. So I'd like to take that one first unless there are objections. Nope? Okay. So that one is JLCF. And if you'll see -- I'm just scrolling very, very slowly on my computer. If you look at it, you'll see that it is significantly changed from before. We basically threw out quite a bit of what we had before and updated it. And there were a bunch of different reasons for this. Mr. Poska and I have met several times with this policy. I know that our Director of Food Services went through this policy and compared it to some changes in federal law and some federal grant law. We've met with both of the high school principals. We've met with the Student Senate at North. We've met with the BOE rep from North as well. And we have cross-referenced it with both federal and state laws and the Department of Education's website because there are some inconsistencies between all of those, and we wanted to make sure that we were complying with everything. If you look at the policy in your packet, you'll see on page -- what page is this? Four of nine and five of nine and six of nine, that there are some areas that we have left in highlighted because everything is red, and so I wanted to bring your attention. So we have a School District Wellness Committee. In the past, we've had a school board member on the committee, but since COVID, we have not. It used to be Ms. Oden who was on the thing. So one of the things that I'm going to be asking the Board to do is to assign a volunteer from the Board to be on the Wellness Committee again. If we have more than one school board member, then it becomes subject to the right-to-know law, which is why that line is highlighted, and all of the work has to be a publicly noticed meeting, which isn't really conducive for what's meant to be an internal committee. So my suggestion to the Board is that we have one board member, and then we let the experts within the district continue to do their work. And when they have things to bring to the Board, they will continue to bring it to the Board as they do now. And then on page five and six, we've highlighted Alliance for Healthier Generation. And so we got that directly from, I think, the USDA? Is that right?
Yes. Just to go back to what Ms. Raymond was referencing earlier, one of the challenges with this is that it needed to be updated per the federal regulations from our food service director. So we needed an updated policy that needed to be submitted. In the process of doing this, we had to establish a committee, which we did, and I want to thank not only Dahlia Dagel, but Jean Marie Carrasco, the lead nurse at Elm Street, Chanel LaFontaine, lead school counselor at Elm Street, along with Lisa Gingras, our Director of Athletics, and Chaz --
Miller.
Miller, thank you. Thank Chaz Miller from Led Street to participate on this committee to review. So we kind of went a little backwards due to some issues. So we looked at the federal policy first. The reason why we looked at the federal policy first is trying to update and review the NHSBA policy was a challenge because they too had a cyber attack. So we could not access their updated JLCF policy. This policy was updated, I believe, in August of 2022. So it was a relatively new update from NHSBA. So after reviewing the federal policy, we went and then compared it to what NHSBA got to, and we kind of took the very verbose federal language and kind of condensed it in more aligned with what the NHSBA is recommending. To Ms. Raymond's point, in the federal guidelines, they're talking, you know, when they're talking about, you know, where do you get this information regarding smart snacks and everything else? The USDA is recommending as a resource the Alliance for -- excuse me, Alliance for Greater Health?
A --
For Healthier Generation?
Healthier Generation.
As a possible resource to reference this when we're putting together our policy. So kind of wanted to make note there that that is a recommendation as a resource that's available to us to get some more information for this work.
Right. Because typically, we don't put hyperlinks in our policies, right? We want our policies to stand alone without having to click on anything. But in this case, the federal government has said, if you have a question about whether food meets the guidelines set by the federal government, this is the place to go to check it out. And so we wanted people who are trying to comply with the policy and the law to have a convenient place to go. There's a lot in here, and so I understand if we have a lot of questions about it.
Well, I have a few. But first, I wanted to say that I do like this policy better than the old one. The old one had each individual beverage item listed, and it was really kind of -- it was just not well-written, and I like this a lot better. And I like the reference, the Alliance for Healthier Generation. I checked it out, and it's really an excellent modeling source. So the questions I had were about the District Wellness Committee. I like that it's supposed to reflect diversity, and I didn't know if that was realistic, actually, if we were going to be able to do that. And also because they are -- they're completing recommendations for a school level, I didn't know if each school was going to be represented. And then also, I didn't know if it was realistic to have their school-level report completed by September 30th, and that's really all.
I don't think it's realistic to create a -- basically, what we're doing is we're creating a new committee, right, this summer, and then being like, and you have to give us a report in essentially 30 days, which are the first 30 days back at school. So I would not expect the first year that we would have a report from everyone. But I would expect going forward, when they have a full 12 months, well, nine months of a school year, that they would be able to comply with that.
I would --
For the rest of your questions, I'm going to let --
Listen, it's funny that you -- ironic, I should say, that you picked up on those two things because those are two of the things that Ms. Raymond and I discuss. And I think, you know, I think we struggled to get those four or five members of the committee to participate at that time. So to try to think that it's realistic to have 18-plus members of the committee is going to be a challenge. I think it's important that we have representation from all the levels. We have parents involved. We have community members involved. So I think going forward, that is our goal, is to try to have that representation. And again, maybe if we were able to have something from, you know, six to 12 type of members on the committee, I think is realistic as we go forward, but more of a representation of our entire district.
Do you have any thoughts about how you can work to get more representation? Because, I mean, even if we don't have the representation, if we're working towards it, that would be something that would be, I don't know, probably admirable to show that we want to get to someplace better.
No, I think that's something, you know, to Ms. Raymond's point, I think the timing of this was challenging to get this done at the end of the year. I think to start a committee now would be a challenge as well. So I think that's something we're going to look to address at the beginning of the year. I know Ms. Dagel has been, you know, Ms. Dagel is happy that this policy is now updated so she can submit it to the feds to demonstrate that we've done this. So our next step is to form the committee. And again, I think from what I've heard, there was a committee in place prior to COVID that met pretty regularly in place. I'm not quite sure how representative it was, to be quite honest with you, but I think that is our goal moving forward, is to kind of put that in place so that it's sustainable over there as opposed to trying to go back and looking for those documents to figure out who has been part of this committee.
And I think communication with the community and parents is not something that this Board would consider a strength of ours. So I think if we are able to get the policy passed so that it's in place before school starts, then we can help the district or the district -- we can kind of talk to Ms. Dagel and both Mr. Poska and Ms. Sarfati about how do we get this out to the community to elicit people to be on it? You know, is it something that we want to post on the website and say, we're looking for members of this new committee that we've formed? Is it something that we want to send home with the beginning-of-the-year paperwork? Or is that too overwhelming for families? Clearly, I don't think we've done a good job over the last, you know, years that I've been on the Board at getting information out. So at this point, I'm at a loss, and I'm hoping that the Board and, you know, other people can kind of give us some ideas on that. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, we always talk about community participation, and we want everything open. But we also have to make sure that we respect parents and all their rights that they're entitled to with this policy and any other policy. So that's the biggest thing. We need to respect the parents and respect that if they can or cannot be in any committees, but let them also be able to send in their communications and respect their opinions on all this also. Parental rights is the number-one thing.
Yep. And so the other thing I want to note about this policy, so this will bring us into compliance with the federal government, which is really important because we need money from the USDA to continue to provide lunches. But it also contains some updates regarding what types of food and beverages are allowed, which is what the high schoolers are very focused on right now. The Student Senate would like to do what Concord School District does, and they have coffee carts occasionally for fundraising purposes. And so the high schools would like to be able to do that as part of their DECA program for fundraising. And so I think that the Student Senate at North, I don't know about South, but at North at least, was trying to arrange to get some students to the next board meeting to kind of talk about the importance of DECA and how this policy and some of these changes will help them with their fundraising for DECA. Yes, Mr. Coffee and then Ms. Johnson.
I'm just wondering whether four meetings per nine months is a reasonable expectation?
It's a requirement of the law, so. Yeah, we didn't come up with that number. It's not, I mean, I don't know who came up with that, but it's not something arbitrary for Nashville.
Question. Under USDA, since we depend on their money, so we have to comply with what the feds want us to comply with, is having beverages like caffeinated coffee and all that allowed because they're so restrictive on so much stuff?
They are. And so we've met two or three times with Ms. Dagel and the Student Senate and the principals of the school. Warren has a nice handout that he may be handing all of us with what the federal guidelines are. And basically, the limit is you can have certain amount of caffeine per beverage, and there's a limit on how much sugar you can have per how many ounces of beverage. And so we are not going to be having like iced, you know, cappuccino, I don't know, espressos or something. We're not going to have, you know, these big giant drinks. They just can't and comply with the law. So they're really, I think the way Concord does it is they serve it in small containers. They have, you know, the limited amount of additives you can have. A lot of it has to be. There's a calorie restriction. It's the same reason why all of our candy machines disappeared and were replaced with like bottled water machines. And it certainly doesn't cover any type of energy drink. So those will still not be allowed.
So how do we monitor this? I mean, I guess the question is, do you water down the coffee so you have less caffeine and you give them sugar substitutes or something, you know? It's just, I'm thinking because we have to be in compliance with the USDA, no matter what, for their money.
So the way that this policy leaves that monitoring and compliance, it becomes the responsibility of the building principals. And so it is no longer, it's not a board responsibility because how are we going to monitor teenagers? We're not going to do that. So it puts the approval of coffee carts and the monitoring of the coffee cart idea in the hands of each individual building principal to approve or disapprove depending on their criteria.
And just this actually, this updated policy gives the schools, this policy gives the principals more flexibility than the previous policy. So that is some of the changes. But I think to your point that you made earlier, I mean, you know, I've sat here, and I'm sure Mr. Claffey has too, there aren't many students who aren't walking in with a Dunkin' Donuts cup or a Starbucks cup. But what they will be able to offer is probably going to be vastly more limited than what we see coming in.
I have a question.
Yep.
I was just looking through the policy, and I didn't know what Warren and the other kids want to do if it falls under fundraising because it says each school may allow up to nine bake sales or other fundraising sales of noncompliant foods, which are not more than one day in duration. Is that what he wants, or they want something more regular?
It could be under that, and it could also be under the competitive foods and beverages above that. So there is some flexibility in both places, but I think there'll be many places that will be looking for that fundraiser. You only have nine, how do you choose that? And I, you know, to DECA's point, that is part of their education and how they're marketing, and it's a whole process that they're going through. But again, this provides more flexibility to the schools.
Yep. So under the, yeah, competitive foods, beverages, I think is where they're looking. But under the part where, you know, you can have previously, the previous version of the law was four bake sales a year, and so the state law has changed to a law up to nine, which I don't know that we have any elementary schools having nine bake sales a year, but theoretically, they could under the new policy. But also, this means that our elementary schools, when they have their science nights or their, you know, community nights, Elm Street just did an ice cream social. I know South does an ice cream and art night. In those circumstances, it also broadens the variety of food and beverages that they can have for the community coming in, which is nice. Any other questions or comments on JLCF? No? Okay. So I am going to move that we send JLCF as presented here tonight to the full board for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. All right, we have like eight minutes until they kick us out. The other policies aren't particularly more or less time-limited since school is over tomorrow, and we can do a lot of them in July. So I think just going back to the ACE, I mean, we put them on the agenda in alphabetical order. That's really the only thing. All right, so ACE is procedural safeguards on nondiscrimination on the basis of handicapped disability. So typically, we, like I said, we try not to put specific phone numbers, hyperlinks, et cetera, in policies that we might have to update every time those change. But these are all places that are from the state and that we're legally required to have in there. So we wanted to make sure that we have everything in our policy that anyone would need when they're looking for resources and also all of the ones that are required by law. And since this policy hasn't been updated since 2008, there were quite a bit of changes. And then if you see, ACER goes with it as well, which has, again, oh, I'm sorry, ACER is the one that had all of that list, and we've put it now in ACE so that we only have one policy instead of making people look in two different places. Does that make sense? Did I miss something?
Nope, that's exactly right, Ms. Raymond. This is something that Ms. Lampy and I had quite a long discussion about along with Mr. Alexander. I think we got to the point where we want to adopt and improve ACE. And then at the same time, what we've taken is we've done, we've taken ACE-R and put it into ACE. So the next step would be after we, if we can approve ACE, then we would be rescinding ACE-R.
I'm really super happy with this. I was kind of, it's just better than I could have expected. So thank you very much, Mr. Poska.
Oh, that's good to hear because you're like our resident expert on all of this. Oh, that's good to hear because you're like our resident expert on all of this stuff. Okay. So on, any questions or comments? No? All right. So I move that we send ACE to the board for approval.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then I'm going to move that we rescind ACE-R now that it is incorporated in ACE.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So let us start to tackle. Why is this different on my sheet than here? Hold on, I'm sorry. No, I just, the book is different than what is in my packet. So the book has BEDC next, no, BEB, Special Board Meetings, next. And I don't have that. Oh, there it is.
BEDC should come first.
Yeah.
But it's BEAR first, so, but we have to take BEDC first in order to rescind BEA-R.
Okay. Oh, those are the ones that are all together. So let's look at BEB if you just keep scrolling down a little bit more. Oh. All right, I'm going to ask, given our time thing that we hold on these, does anyone have any objection to that? I think that when we're talking about three policies that all go together and they have to do with the right-to-know law, that we deserve to give them more than four minutes of our time. So let's hold these till July. Okay. So that brings us down to DHA, Contract Signing Authority. So Ms. Johnson had, I think correctly brought up at a meeting, oh, gosh, it's been a few months, about making sure that we get the costing sheet when we're considering union contracts. And so Mr. Poska and I asked Mr. Donovan to go and take a look at our Contract Signing Authority policy and then to take a look at the Business Office Operations Manual. And the Business Office Operations Manual is very specific about getting those costing sheets and getting them to us in a timely manner. So I think that we somehow got away from that practice, but our policy and our Business Office Operations Manual both require it to happen. So Mr. Donovan's not asking for updates to the policy, but he wants us, he wants to know, he wants everyone to know that he's reviewed all of this and that he will ensure that everything is in compliance here on out. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I forgot about this. You know, it's been so long, the brain.
I didn't forget about it. I had it on my queue. I ship it around.
It's just a lot of things have happened over the last several months. But my other concern is here, is that it seems like every time we put bids, it's always the same construction agency, and it's always, it's the same people. And the answer is always, well, they know what we're looking for. That's not the right answer. The right answer has to be, it's time, maybe we have new construction companies and architects coming in to the school district and not the same old, same old people all the time. Because I remember Ms. Lampier and I both pulled out on a bid, two bids. One of them was $63,000, one was like about $73,000, and one came in at $9,900. And we both pulled that out and said, why is this so less? And the answer was, well, they said that's what they could do it for. But when, if they would have said $40,000 or $50,000, it probably wouldn't have shocked us as much. But it was such a low bid on, I think it's time that we really start, if any other projects come along, we really start using different companies. It's not to badmouth anybody. I don't want to get anybody sued, but it's just, you know, the way things are right now. And so, and a lot of people have mentioned that to me. It's the same people all the time, the same companies all the time. And we did that with Elm Street and other schools for the longest time. It was the same contractors and architects.
I wonder if next week, we could ask Mr. Donovan to speak briefly on the process for bidding, like where does it get posted when we put out a bid?
Supposed to be posted.
Well, I know it's posted. I get a text message on my phone, too, but like, I don't know the list of places or, you know, is there a way that in today's digital age, we can broaden our reach?
Right. But I'm glad we did this. You know, purchases anything over $10,000, we have to, has to be done, and, you know, we need to be able to see what's going on.
All right.
So, and I know we're getting down to the end, and this is something that I want to say thank you.
Yep. So I'm going to move that we send DHA to the full board, as is.
Oh, second.
Thanks. Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
I had just one small question. This doesn't refer to any personnel matters, does it?
No.
Okay. All right, thanks.
That's not correct. It does talk about contracts with unions, but the entire contract, not individual individuals. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thanks.
So when we have, when a contract comes to us, yes, we are supposed to get the costing sheet with all of our other materials three days before the meeting so we have time to review it.
Right.
So, okay. So all in favor of sending DHA to the full board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And with that, I'm going to ask y'all to come back in July for the rest of the agenda. Any objections to that?
No.
No? Okay. And as always, email me if there's something else that you want me to add to the queue, and I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, pretty much. They're going to turn us off anyways. All right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and we are adjourned at 6:56 PM, and my apologies to everyone.